Hi, John.
Hello, hi.
Hi, John.
Feeling better?
Uh, one day at a time.
Yeah, so why is that we hear ocean waves in the background, John?
Uh, I actually, I'm sitting next to my fish tank, so.
Good response.
Got a little wave producer in there, all right, all right.
It's a little, yeah, the water level might be a little low.
All right, um, we do not have a copy of your usual report, it seems.
I, I did not prepare one, Rennie, just having come back Monday.
There we go.
Yeah, I'm just. Yeah.
He'll supply it when you get going again.
Yeah, I, I, there, there won't, won't be much of a change from last month, um, for sure.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Rennie, Rennie.
We trust you, John.
There is one voucher that was left for you that needs.
We got it and we signed it.
Sign it already.
Wonderful, thank you.
That's just kidding, that's just over the top, really, sir.
Two items and one voucher.
Two items and one voucher, see, we're really at the wrong time here, we are living it up tonight. So. Um, all right. Well, of course, my computer chose now to reboot everything, so. Um, all right. So our first issue is local waterfront revitalization. Julie Noble, you're with us, yes?
I am, how, how are you?
Good, good, how are you tonight?
I'm great.
All right, tell us about this, uh, item that's before us here regarding the Kingston Point Wetland Restoration and Public Access Improvement, Improv- Improvement approved.
Uh, yes, uh, so I've come before you, uh, several times on this project, uh, we've completed, recently completed the seeker on this project, so, uh, this was just given a negative declaration by you all, um, and it was declared an unlisted action. I'm now here, uh, that was done by laws and rules, I'm now here to, uh, have this, uh, funding approved. So, uh, the grant is from the Department of State. And the project, as a reminder, is the demolition of two homes on North Street that are abandoned, uh, due to recurring flooding. Um, and the, so the project is to demolish those two buildings and then build a boardwalk and here, still to be designed, uh, the grant that we received from the Department of State is for five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. And the local match is ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And I'm here to ask two things, one is to be given authorization to expend the funds in the first instance, and the second is to authorize a bond ordinance for the full project sum of the six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, of which five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars would be reimbursed. And the financial impact to the city would be the city's match of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. And actually, not entirely, um, some of that is actually going to come out of, um, I like, yes, entirely, ninety-seven thousand, five hundred. I was looking at my, at my budget to see if that, if our, if our time is going to be, um, serving this match, and actually, uh, it is. So now that I'm looking at it, forty-five thousand, four hundred and twenty-eight dollars of fund of budget is salary for myself and the engineer, uh, match, and the rest is cash for a structured demolition, um, but ultimately, the financial impact is ninety-seven, five.
Okay.
Right.
Any questions, Julie?
It's a language.
No, this seems pretty straightforward.
There's some students saying they don't want to talk.
Can I, can I make one comment?
Yes, John.
Under the description of the one committee report where it says authorizing a bond ordinance for New York State Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program Grant Number C one zero zero two six one eight, I would recommend adding to that in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Even though, long-term, we're only going to borrow the ninety-seven, five, the, the committee report really should just state that the bond ordinance is for the full six fifty. I, I, I know the wording is that we're asking for the bonding for the full amount, but we should just put a dollar amount. I guess, well, I, I guess in the line above it, resolution of the authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the sum of six fifty, never mind, I guess that's fine.
Um, too late, I already wrote it in.
That's fine, too, as long as we're all clear that the bond ordinance that the council will adopt will read six fifty, um, with the expectation that there will be grant funding in the amount of five fifty-two, five.
All right, that's, uh, what it says, I'll read it here, let me know if you got a, an issue, anybody. Uh, resolution of the common counsel of the City of Kingston, New York, authorizing the adoption of a bond ordinance for the sum of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Kingston Point Wetland Restoration and Public Access Improvement Project. Uh, authorizing a bond ordinance for New York State Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program. Grant number one zero, C one zero zero two six one eight, in the amount of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Grant total is in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars, the local match of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars will come from the bond. The total project cost is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, estimated financial impact for the city is ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars. Do we have an motion to approve? Motion by Steve Shabbat, second by Sarah Pastey, is there any discussion?
I'd like people to understand that it's, uh, first instance funded. That which scares you, when we talk about six hundred and fifty thousand dollar bond, not understanding where it's not, we're not going to, it's not six hundred and fifty thousand city dollars.
Right.
Right.
I suppose I'll talk about that in the meeting.
Bring that up at our council meeting on December second. Uh, anything else, any other discussion? Or is it wisdom? Or is it not wisdom? Uh, all right, in that case, I'll call for the vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Yikes.
You got it, Julie.
Thank you.
It's unanimously, but, uh, some people got demoted from the council and we called some old ones back.
Right.
Uh, so Tony Davis, one day of the year, so, uh, let this be, oh, he didn't come back.
Yep, I used an old report.
So three of you are going to have to decide who you are or not.
Hey, I'm seeing her, I'll be calling here.
All right.
And then, uh, let's see, the next one is is this different, Julie, the?
Uh, the other one is just, uh, is allowing me to expend the funds, so it's the formality of allowing me to move forward the project by expending the funds.
Okay.
I believe we have to do both, right, John?
Both, both committee reports?
Yeah.
Um, technically, you don't need the authorization to spend in the first instance unless you need it for the grant, because that authorization is in the bond ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, so I guess that I, that has been, I mean, it's already before you, so maybe just, I don't know, it's up to you.
There's no harm in them, in them approving it, of passing it, just, you know, just for the record, we, we don't need, the only time you really need that authorization the first instance is where, A, it's required by the grant, or, or B, um, there's no bonding, so that language wouldn't be in the.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Yeah.
Well, we had the force, uh, so, uh, it reads description, authorizing the mayor to expend funds in the first instance.
Oh, love that.
For the New York State Department of State Local Waterfront Revitalization Program, Grant Number C one zero zero two six one eight, in the amount of five hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred dollars for the Kingston Point Wetland Restoration and Public Access Improvement Project. The local match of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars is required, the total cost of the project is six hundred and fifty thousand dollars, estimated financial impact, ninety-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, do you have motion to approve?
Motion.
Sarah Pastey, second by Steve Shabbat, any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I'll call for the both, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Passes unanimously. All right.
So for the record, I did use the correct, uh, committee report on that one.
You did, good. We're all right, we, we are flexible.
Fifty percent is not bad.
No.
Well, we appreciate you saving the paper, not just throwing it away. All right.
Okay, thank you. Bye.
For us is the fee schedule, Neil Noble, you want to join us?
I, I would love to. So as part of the budget process each year, we provide, uh, you all with an updated, uh, proposed fee schedule, uh, that includes uh, items that came up during each of our internal meetings related to, uh, each section, and so you'll see, as we do each year, we highlighted in red, um, any new language, uh, as well as any, um, items that were changed. And so everything in black, uh, is as it is currently in twenty twenty-five. And then anything in red is any language or changes that, um, were approved or were proposed, and so if you have any questions, thoughts, we could, um, either go by questions, if you want to go by section, it's really, um, up to you all, how you'd like to address it.
But, uh, the tents, if you could speak on why we need a building permit for tents, and is this on city property or is this on private?
Yes, so, um, during my meeting with Steve Knox, um, he brought to my attention that under, uh, the New York State Building Code, tents are required to be accepted if the tent itself is over four hundred square feet. Uh, so any tent larger than twenty by twenty, um, that is erected, um, needs to be accepted by the building permit under state code. Uh, and then, that also includes any aggregation of tents in one area that are over eight hundred square feet, so for instance, if you have more than eight ten by ten tents at a, a med site, um, under state law, there's required to be accepted. I would say that we've not been doing that as legally as we, um, may have been needing to, um. And so as a part of this proposal, I did also ensure see that if this is going to be. Steve that if this is going to be put before us, that he also needs to include um setting up a system for his staff to also work, um you know, um potentially on weekends, so I would expect these. Um right now, the only inspections that they've been doing are slipping, that's uh um are generally happening on Monday events that set up on Fridays.
Hmm.
Um and so that is really good. Same thing instead of limited our inspection on weekends. Um there have been some uh festivals that have already been going through this process. Uh but there are very few that are three day or two day events that start to set up on Fridays. And so that is why um and so he felt that this was the appropriate fee uh based on the staffing and inspections necessary. Uh because it does oftentimes require um an initial inspection and then kind of follow-up inspection as a part of these events. And so this will definitely be a change um for all of our nonprofits that host events um in the city. Um especially some more large street festivals. And so this will um their fire safety inspections, so they're basically looking for uh extension cords, uh lighting issues, making sure that uh there are no flammable um things happening underneath tents. So for instance, you know, cooking underneath these ten by ten tents. Uh things like that, that are in state fire code. So is what they'll be looking for. Now, what they're dealing with under the tent is except for their cooking or things like that. So that's um gonna definitely be a change. And so uh you know, if approved, you know, we would include this information in all of our special event applications so that everyone that's planning these events know that they'll be required to, you know, work with the building department um to get these um inspections done.
Now presuming these inspections will be going on during the uh, well, it's in use, right?
That's during the set up. Yeah, right. So really just like the morning of, you know, these events. And uh that's uh again, I think uh
Something is a pop-up.
Yeah, so they're ten generally ten by ten.
So every Saturday, somebody's gotta be at the farmer's market?
Yeah, okay.
Under the state law, yeah.
Yep.
Who's gonna pay the levy?
Yeah, does does that mean now the farmer's market has to pay this permit every weekend?
It does seem like that's the case. Yeah, unless we decided to do something differently. So yeah, at first, a place like the farmer's market, it would be uh two hundred and twenty-five dollars to have the staff basically there to inspect on Saturday mornings.
Now, will this be uh overtime by uh apartment?
Yeah.
And now, what about tents that have been, that seem to stay up all season long? Are those, have those been inspected? Or is this like a going forward thing? I can think of some places that have a large tent.
Yeah, so anything that is
Most of the year.
Yeah, those are generally, they're already probably been inspected. Because it's basically up during the week, Monday through Friday, the building departments are already kind of honed in on those.
Okay.
And have kind of generally made sure that those have been inspected, especially ones that are um larger, there's like wing loads that have to be taken into consideration, um how they're cast into the ground. So the building department kind of goes through already a pretty rigorous review of those. Yeah.
Four feet, I think.
Well, right now, there's nothing in the fee schedule.
Okay.
Nothing? But this would be the first, yeah.
Yeah.
And are those, would those long-term ones be sort of evaluated every year? So there's
There's a car making.
There's an annual.
Yeah.
Yeah. The annual fee, or those that use them all the time?
Yeah, and again, I think about about, you know, the the problem with some of these kind of weekly or bi-weekly events is that the vendors change, the tents change, and that's kind of why the inspections would have to happen more frequently compared to, say, one tent being put up. So have hey, you had, we had your building department meeting yet? It's
No.
Yeah.
So this again should be a a topic of conversation, if you'd like to bring it up. But again, he knows much more and this was his proposal. And just kind of carrying the the water well.
I mean, I do understand.
He even thought to the possibility of having two sets fees, one for for-profit entities, one for non-profits.
Yeah, it's definitely something for the the council to consider. Um you know, obviously, the cost of labor doesn't change. Um but, yeah.
So how does the knowing that this happens, if I'm having a barbecue in my yard? And I put up a, you know, like I used to work at the True Value in New Pauls, we would set up like a pretty substantial tent for a barbecue and one day maybe take it down the next day. Like it does Herzog's, the rental company, alert the city that somebody rented out this center, is an incumbent on that applicant to
Even a pop-up. That you can go to, you know, wherever, buy a pop-up and put it up in your yard.
Or you can eat them together. You can qualify for twenty by twenty.
And that's pretty hard.
Yes, so generally, any tent company that's delivering a tent larger than twenty by twenty knows to I think, you know, work with the building department, or at least select to, you know, allow the the person renting the tent to know that there's rules related to putting up such a big tent. Um.
But okay, so the farmer's market, they've all got little pop-ups.
Yeah, as long as there's eight, there's more than eight of them, they have to register. If you've got seven of them on, I think, under this code, you're okay. Uh but if you have eight or more under state code, um within eight hundred, it's very big aggregate or cumulative.
Yeah, cumulative.
Yes.
So maybe we should buy them up, seven hundred and ninety-nine square foot town.
Good conversation with Steve, you're right.
Yeah, it is.
What are other, do other municipalities have this tent?
I tend to think Steve tells me that um this is under state code. And so I think the point is, is regardless of whether other municipalities are doing it, this is the right thing to do legally.
Mm-hmm.
Um that has been kind of uh, he says that there are other cities that do this. I don't know locally. But there's a lot of examples. I would say that you could look at different jurisdictions in like Arthur County and some of our neighbors that have thirteen, fourteen thousand people, they have one or two code enforcement officers. Look, we have twenty, we have twenty-four thousand people and we have more than thirteen of them. That, um so I think that there's difference levels of code enforcement happening in our city compared to some of our surrounding jurisdictions. That could also be a good conversation for Steve. He meets code enforcement, people across the state. Yeah, but the only other major change in the building department anyway was the change that was requested by the Midtown Business Association in particular. It would affect a whole city, but um the reduction of the fee related to people who are doing outdoor dining. Um generally, regardless of whether you're doing outdoor dining on the street or outdoor dining in front of your business on the sidewalk, you pay the same fee. And so there was a proposed, um I was asked to do something about that. And so what we came up with was to increase the fee for people who are taking out parking spaces. Um and substantially lower and really almost eliminate the fee for people who want to set up um sidewalk sidewalk government, which is the owner of sidewalk, but other businesses, we felt they still need an application, we proposed a nominal um you know, uh in a permit for that of ten dollars. Um which is a substantial reduction compared to the one fifty plus the three fifty for the permits for people who are out in the street. So we hope that, you know, that would be a fire business to be, or many of them are mostly just on the sidewalks.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah, that would seem good.
Uh I was curious about the the two-year permit for this, for the sidewalk cafe.
Yeah.
Does that need? Does the building department come out and take a look at that? So do they need to come out, you know, in May when you put your tables out? And then again, even though it's on the same permit?
Uh yes, so uh in the see, in the code that the council passed, it is actually a two-year permit, it just was never written in here.
Okay.
We wanted to just clarify that it was for two years. Um again, we don't have it each year. So that fee covers both years of inspections.
We, uh so on, under planning, you worry maximum was added and then deleted. So are we disregarding the word maximum there?
Um.
Should we go through this page by page instead of jumping around or?
Or any time.
All right. There's not the age numbers.
I thought it was our creation fee for planning.
So where is that?
Next to last page.
Yeah. Maximum was removed. Uh so it's, I I made it right so you can see that it was removed.
Okay.
I guess I should have, yeah, I think I did that.
All right.
Um, sorry. And that just reflects your video code that you guys passed that they mentioned just here. Yeah.
Um then if we want to unjump by jumping, we can go back to the under fire department, which actually two, three, four, five, I guess. There's like the licensing at the top.
Yeah.
Um so getting rid of specific license level and other costs and just making it in terms of the um cost of the general work. So why was ten thousand dollars chosen as the breakpoint there?
Uh that's it, the fire chief proposed that. I don't know. Uh I think that they felt like that was in terms of the general electrical work that's happening, under ten thousand is generally residential. Um larger projects that are more mid-range is that ten to a hundred thousand. Um and then over that is kind of much larger commercial construction. So I think that's why he did that. He must have used, found an example from somewhere else, but um I didn't get into detail. I just kind of took his suggestion.
Okay, so we'll ask him when he comes to the force.
Yeah.
Cause I I this I I would want to clarify, cause I thought it might mean per, it doesn't mean per job, it means, I guess, per.
I, it's per job. So class B license is just per job. So class B license is basically someone who does not have a license in the City of Kingston or Ulster County. Someone who is, say, from Akisie, where we have a reciprocal relationship with. And so they're able to use their license that they have in Akisie to get something called a class B. And then a fee is charged to them for basically, um you know, needing to get a license here. They still have to pay all their building department fees um related to that work. And so the point of having this is so that someone from out of town who doesn't have our license will at least pay kind of a fair share compared to someone who's local, who has a license. Um and is, you know, one of our kind of Kingston contractors.
Gotcha.
And all of the ones below that that are deleted, special electrician's permit?
Uh in a while. So the chief is just, I guess, cleaning up all of those old license titles that we just haven't used anymore for quite some time.
And is that true also of the class A?
Correct, we don't need
We don't.
Please, signs anymore. Um yeah, and
Um in the next page, this abandoned property acquired through the nineteen A process.
And so after um BarTech is going through for nineteen A acquisitions right now through court system. Um and I know you guys are somewhat familiar with that already.
Oh, yeah.
Uh what we found is that the fees associated with going through that court process is much larger than the twelve hundred that the council updated last year. Um and so BarTech looked at his costs now that we had them and we are much closer to that five thousand dollar range. And so he proposed making that change. And we still feel like twelve hundred for the end rent properties is reasonable, um based on some of our current experiences, but for the the end rent, the nineteen A, it's a much more complicated legal process and more expensive for us to go through. Necessary, um probably, it's probably more expensive.
So who's paying them?
Uh so this is a fee that is placed on a property. So the property owner of the record who has abandoned, who has abandoned a property, I don't know, and so this would basically be put off that property, which we would then potentially get back at some point when we go to sell it or auction it or dispose of it in some way.
Yep.
Um.
That makes sense.
How does the Taylor v. Hennepin affect that? Like, would the, is this fee then going to the derelict property owner?
So for nineteen A properties, um they are not part of the Taylor. Um so it's a separate judicial process. And so um this would basically be placed on that property so that when this property is disposed of by the city, there's an ability for the city to group that if they so choose. Uh nineteen A properties, um that is not part of the Taylor kind of thing um is one of the properties that um is covered by the updated distribution policy that you all worked on. And so um those properties, you have the ability to be transferred to a land bank into some other property to, you know, to those types of entities at a cheaper price than market value. And so it's it's possible that we may or may not get that five thousand dollars back. It would really be up to the council to decide. But I think it was important for us to be able to reflect that anyway, as to what it costs the city to acquire.
Okay.
Oh, and that same, oh, in the same section, just on the page before, it says payment of affordable housing payment obligations unmet. And so are there any fees, I didn't see fees associated with that? But like in the, the little grid book, on the next page, there was a fee.
Yeah, I think that the fee
I just wondered if maybe that column had not made it onto the page or whether there
Yeah. I don't know. Um this was added to the fee schedule um earlier this year, when the zoning code was updated.
Mm-hmm.
I'll have to check with Alisa to see if something is missing there. It does, I would, I would agree with you, Sarah.
It's the way it looks compared to the the one below it is, it looks like there's a fee missing.
Um.
With this.
There should be a third column.
There should be a third column, what it looks like to me.
Yeah.
So that's fixed, I'm guessing.
Um. Oh wait, no, I actually, uh
No?
Three. I think that the fee is set up differently. So it, the fee itself is set up as it's one and a half times the area median income for a family of four. So
Right.
Right, so area median income is forty thousand dollars.
Got it. So that's, that's part of it. That is, that that's the fee.
That's the
Okay, thank you. That answers the question.
Yeah.
First duty.
Right, that answers the question.
There should, I mean, there should be titles on this.
Yeah, that would help, that would help.
Unfortunately, this was taken directly out of your legislation. And so I think, but we can, we'll double check to make sure, but um I think that that
That's the actual fee.
Fee.
And and you can't, and you can't put a number of it because it depends.
Correct.
Got it. Okay.
All right, next page. Bench sponsorship program. So those are two new fees.
Yes, so as a part of, um Lindsay came for this committee a couple of months ago to get that program initiated. And so uh this is now kind of uh the costs associated. And so we looked at a couple of other communities um to be able to figure out what they did. And so we're proposing five hundred dollars for um a plaque um that would go on an existing bench. Um and then that person would be able to be on that bench for ten years. And then at the end of ten years, they would have the ability to either renew, um or the plaque would come off to allow someone else to go on the bench. Um or if they wanted a new bench, um with a plaque, um it would be two thousand Um, or if they wanted a new bench, um, with a plaque, um, it would be two thousand dollars. Uh, and that is about the cost of a new bench, like plaque nowadays. And so we, so those are that. And then on another section on their planning will be the tree part of it. So you'll remember you guys.
Yep.
Is that big stairs now if they pay for it?
No.
Take that with them or?
No, so they're mainly the fact of giving this to the city. And so the city then buys the bench. Uh, and so that's not theirs. Um, and they signed an agreement that basically says it's not theirs. So it's only, they can only apply that for ten years. And then they have kind of first chance of refusals, renew, if not, it kind of gets reopened up to the pool.
What happens to the plaque? They choose not to refuse to, or choose not to renew, do we give it to them?
They give them. Yeah.
Like that.
They just gave it off. Yeah. I don't know how, what the constitution doesn't close it in ten years. Um, and the, the, the rules and regulations also state, um, that Lindsay prepared, um, that basically they only get, you know, uh, the plaque and then the plaque can be, it can be replaced one time more. And then after that, if the plaque is damaged or then they are.
So, yeah.
Yeah.
So they had just planted plaque in the first place, dude?
Uh, you know, what I believe that we have it set up as we are preparing the, the plaque. So we, um, would go to a sign shop and have so that they're all kinds of. Yeah, so they're only allowed a certain number of numerals in the application form. And it can, there's only sort of, they can't put like emojis or things like that. So, um, no, there's a whole set of rules, um, that we, I think we took. From Peak Still, they created a great program and a whole bunch of rules that we couldn't even think of. And so that's not been incorporated.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good. Do I need these in our own sign shop or we?
No, all of this, Steve.
On the previous page, parking. The, oh, the difference between expired and over limit is expired relates to parking meter and over limit is where there's a time base. Like parking, that.
Yes.
Means if you hit, no, you know, that parking is limited to two hours. So if you're beyond two hours, that's when you leave.
Yes. Yeah, and the only new thing, and it's not on here yet, cause I submitted this to the council prior to you all passing the law. For, um, is that we will need to update this ideally before you pass this um, to be able to add the new fifty dollars for, um, this school zones, the cameras, um, and then the twenty-five dollar leave. So that you just passed, so it's not in here yet. And so that will need to be added. So Lisa, you'll have to remind me that we have to do that. Um, so that will be an amendment to the parking schedule here.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I guess.
Yes.
Anything else on that? Um, while we're talking about parking still, um, how does? So if I don't pay my snow emergency ticket after fifteen days, it starts at one hundred forty-five, right? Not getting another ticket in those fifteen days?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
May bury your cars.
Yeah, I mean, there is, and this, it's not been presented here, um, but you know, one of the things that I uh, talking to court counsel's office, um, and just something to consider and maybe it's something that the council would want to look at in the future, um, especially, you know, when you look at some of our fine structures, um, having the tickets double, um, when the fees are relatively low is sometimes not enough for people to really be encouraged to pay their tickets promptly. Which then leads to, um, you know, a lot of, to be honest, work, uh, for the court counsel's office. You then have to end the court's office, but really to be able to have to review and and go through all of these like cases of unpaid tickets. And so, you know, uh, we did have a conversation about, you know, if we were to make the late payments more, um, would that encourage people to pay more promptly? Um, it's something that's not in here, it's not been proposed, but it definitely was something that was brought up. And it's something that maybe the council may want to consider at some point, um, to really just think about, you know, if something's twenty-five dollars and they have, you know, in essence, quite a long time to pay that, um.
Add four zeros to twenty-five.
So, um, that may be a lot, but it is something that, you know, there is a lot of stuff that happens on the backend when people don't, you know, pay. We have a pretty, you know, we also have the ability for people to appeal and, you know, there is, um, you know, there's also costs of people who then get an appeal and a, and a reduction. And then if they don't pay, then what happens? Like, so there's, you know, there's other fees that we haven't really, uh, contemplated here, but it would just be something that was brought up to me, I felt like it raised it.
I think it's worth considering, mention it. Yep.
And what is, there's no fee for unbooting the car? You just have to pay your tickets?
There is, um, I believe in the boot law. Um, the only fee is the immobilization, immobilization fee, which is that fifty dollars.
Oh, okay.
That's, that's a huge.
Yeah, that's what it is.
That's, that's kind of on top of. On your page.
It was in the middle stage, okay.
Yeah.
Well, there, oh, well. Yeah.
So, so going back to fire department. What is the confined space trailer response conference or no entry in conference with entry? I'm not sure what that is.
So when we, um, so we are one of the certified confinement space teams in Ulster County to be able to go out to mutual aid calls, um, to be able to help. And so if there is, um, a reason for us to be able to basically bring our confinement space team to an event, um, and we are basically just providing technical assistance to the other fire department, private entity, it could be a sewer issue somewhere that we need to go down into. Um, it would be five hundred dollars if we actually have to go into that space.
Got it.
We then would, you know, charge, I don't think that this really comes up a lot, but I think it's important for us to have in case we need to issue that. I mean, obviously, we're having to charge ourselves if we're within the city limits, but if we have to go somewhere else to help.
And is that also true with the personnel response too? They'd have to be charged to whoever is requiring our services and saw the city.
Correct, similar to that. I think most of you actually had it last year, uh, because we didn't have all of these things. We kind of did them, but we didn't have them officially scheduled. So these are added to twenty twenty-five, so I should just think of.
Which goes to getting your battery.
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
So I'm sure we talked about it last year, but could you remind? So has that response, are we billing that to the site in which we're responding or to the volunteer fire department in which we're assisting?
The speller.
The speller, okay.
Yes, yeah. That, or the insurance company or depending on the situation.
What, uh, what's gonna happen with the, uh, park lift program? If there was one on Wall Street, is that was, uh, just to try and operate it?
Yeah, so we, um, you know, it's a, you know, seasonal thing, you know, they apply for a permit at, you know, public works to basically use streets, um, for that, um, you know.
Was there a fee associated with that?
I don't know if there's a fee currently in the fee schedule for using our spaces for parking, like streets for park space.
I was thinking, we do it for the cafes and all, but I mean, they are, I guess, as proper entities, but.
Yeah, we currently don't charge, you know, for kind of that, uh, sh- streets, you know, uh, units.
We do charge, well, I guess it's a little different, cause we charge when people close down the street for a lot of parties, say.
Um, yeah, we charge the application fee, um, generally, but that, but that's pretty much the extent of the charges.
Yeah, so just looking at the notification. May. Any other questions, comments? Um, the ATV golf cart pound of fee into the police department.
Yep.
Um, is that specific for ATVs and golf carts? Or is that fee, um, levy if they were to take like, uh, an unlicensed like class three electric bike or something of those? Or class two, I meant classes are, need a license plate.
Yeah, so the city has code language, so I would have to check your code to see what exactly the council allows. Um, I think the code states, um, you know, ATV or an off-road or off-road vehicles that are basically unlicensed. So I think that there's some label room there in the city code currently.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is it a state law that bans those, is it the class three T-bikes?
Um.
So I don't know, no, I think, I think not, I think it's a city.
Something discussion we had when we were looking at.
I think a cat class three has to be licensed, so it's over here.
Yeah, anything that can.
Well, that's, yeah, it's.
Quite DMV.
Well, I mean, it's not, you can't just, there is a certain type of electric bike that you have to register in the campus.
Right, class three. Yeah, one and two are okay, and three is, is, but, and three is supposed to be on road. That's a huge challenge. How do you know? You know, that's a practical issue for the police. How do you know it's class three or two or one?
When you achieve like a moped, it's a little bit easier to see. Some of these class three bicycles look exactly like the class two. Um, but they've gone fifteen miles faster, um, for hours. So it has been very challenging. And I think that that's really where state laws to kind of fill in the gap there to be able to make some of the clear, you know, uh, designations, um, seller. Uh, like you cannot buy one of these bikes unless it is registered or, you know, permitted. And that is currently the case. You can go on Amazon and buy one of these class threes without having any, like, you can't go and buy a car from a car dealer without there being some DMV paperwork that's required to be filled in.
Right.
Uh, you know, by someone in the car dealership, right, generally.
Yeah.
And so the same thing could really be created for a class three bicycle sales. I've seen that. It's been really challenging for us.
Yeah, my point is just that if you are arrested with one of those, there are legal means for punishment.
Well.
Class three, if you're, if you're in the wrong place.
Yeah.
On the sidewalk or biking.
Yeah, I, I think that that would have to be a discussion with, you know, KPD and, you know, the kind of reinforcements. I, I can't say that. I don't know if there's a difference between, um, our current city, if our city code covers all types of unauthorized vehicular use or it's just specific to ATVs and four-wheel, four-wheel, four-wheel drive vehicles compared to two-wheel drive. Certainly, if someone's got a, a license on a motorcycle that's unlicensed, we're not, we're not using this in power.
That's DMV.
In reception of our code. So I, I, I don't know how a bicycle fall, it may, it may not fall under the state category.
Okay. Other questions, pointers, issues?
All right.
It's Michael. I'm in favor of all of these, but not the ten ones until we hear from the building department or her. Uh, well, this is not a. Oh, okay.
Yep.
This is discussion. So there are problems.
So there's problems right now.
No.
Problems for later. Uh, but we, then we, we have a question, uh, to for Chief Ray and then also.
We're Z nuts. Yep.
So, okay, anything else?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Anytime. Do you have money to adjourn motion? I think.
Okay.
Uh, we got signatures on that, uh, one, well, we got more signatures we could use on that one, we're good.
What, we have four?
Thank you, that's.